And start recording.
This conference will now be recorded.
At this time, I would like to have the regular meeting of the Wallingford Inland Wetlands Water Course Commission order. The tie, the date is April 7th, 2021. The time is 7:00 PM. Will you join me in a pledge allegiance to the flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic which stands.
One nation.
Under God.
Okay. We'll go on to a roll call. You want to start it, Nick?
Nick Curran.
Jennifer?
Jennifer Passeretti.
Deb?
Deborah Phillips.
Robert Simons.
Robert Simons.
Ally?
Ally McKean. We got a few callers that are not muted.
All right, Jim Vitale and Aaron?
Aaron O'Hare, environmental planner.
Katie, we had a few caller ins that aren't muted. So.
Here.
Yeah, all callers. I lost the screen. Just, all I've got is the commissioners now.
There should be a, let's see where it is, gallery view?
View everybody. Oh, there were a lot of people. Everybody, I mean. That's it? Just the commissioners? Something doesn't seem right. Okay. I'm going to call to order or call to the business of a public hearing. This pub, no, one minute before that, this is a consideration of the minutes from the February third meeting. These were handed out in the anticipation of the March meeting and which was canceled, so we'll address the minutes of the February meeting. Is there any corrections to the minutes, commissioners? Modifications? Okay, then at this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Deborah Phillips, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that the minutes of the regular meeting of February 3rd, 2021 be accepted as submitted.
Is there a second?
Robert Simons seconds the motion.
A motion made, seconded, any discussion? Call for a vote. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
None opposed. Okay. Now. This, at this time, we're going to reopen and continue the public hearing on application A20, 10.3, 5 Research Parkway, Money River, Tanny Construction. This is a continuation of the public hearing from November 10th, 2020. Now, commissioners, this, this. Erin brought out that for the record, for the fact that this public hearing is, is regards to being designated a significant activity. And she wanted me to go over the outlines, consideration for decision when significant activity is involved. Criteria for the decision in carrying out the process and policies of Section 22A-36 to 22A-45, exclusive of the State of Connecticut general statutes, includes matters related to regulating, licensing, and enforcing of the provision thereof. The commission shall take into consideration all relative facts and circumstances included but not limited to the environmental impact of the proposed regulated activity on wetlands and water. The applicant's purposes for and any feasible and prudent alternative, the proposed regulated activity shall, which alternates would cause less or no environmental impact to wetlands or water course. The relationship between short-term and long-term impacts of post-regulated activity on wetlands and water courses and the maintenance enhancement of long-term productivity of such wetlands and water course. Irreversible and retrievable loss of wetlands or water course resources which would be caused by the proposed regulated activity, including the extent to which such activity would foreclose a future ability to protect, enhance, or restore such resources. And any mitigation measures which may be considered as a condition of issuing a permit for such activity included but not limiting to measures to, one, prevent or minimize pollution or other environmental damage; two, maintain or embrace existing environmental quality; or three, in the following order of priority, restore, enhance, and create productive wetland or water course resources. The character and degree of entry to or inference with safety, health, or the reasonable use of property which is caused or threatened by the proposed regular activity. And impacts of the proposed activity on wetlands and water courses outside the area for which the activity is proposed and future activities associated with or reasonably related to the proposed regulator activity which are made inven- event invulnerable by the proposed regulation activity and which may have an impact on wetland and water course. Now, this is 10.3. That was 10.2 of our regulations. 10.3, in the case of any application which has received the public hearing pursuant to a finding by the commission that the proposed activity may have a significant impact on wetlands or water courses, a permit shall not be issued unless the commission finds on the basis of the record that a feasible and prudent alternative does not exist. In making this finding, the commission shall consider the facts and circumstances set forth in subsection 10.2 of this section. This finding and the reasons therefore shall be stated on the record and writing. That's what, commissioners, that is what we're charged to protect or to process tonight. Now. Going forward, I wanted to make a couple other notes, points that the, this application is probably, I think in the 30 years that we've been working as commission, 33 years, probably the one most detailed, most involved, most thorough, and I really believe that the town of Wallingford and all their departments have dedicated a tremendous amount of time to this application. The fact that, that some peer review people were, were brought in to help our staff to create a, a better and improved application for this property to protect wetlands, I think just adds to the importance of this whole project and what's involved. So, we will continue on. We, I think we've laid a lot of faith in our, our peer review people. And I certainly hope that they have incorporated everything the peer review has offered into their application. If there becomes a disagreement between peer review and the applicant, I think that is where we need to focus some of our attention tonight. Now, this is going to be, I think, a fairly long meeting. I'm hoping the applicant will and the peer review people both make their presentation and make it condensed and short, not short, but condensed, summarize a lot of the activities because I know so much of the work has gone in with Erin and the rest of the town. Now, please keep in mind that this is the Wetlands Commission. Don't stray off into non-wetlands issues, please. This meeting will end sometime in a reasonable time tonight. I'm not sure exactly what time, but it's not going to continue till the early hours of the morning, that's for sure. So, Erin, do you have anything else to say at this time?
Yes, if I may, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to get some housekeeping things out of the way for the public hearing. I wanted to mention that a legal notice was published in the Merit and Rec and Journal on March 26th and April 2nd, and a copy of that is in the record. The public hearing notice itself was posted in the town hall and in our town website on March 23rd, for the record. And then the applicant, as is required, actually, well, the attorney can say if it's required or not, but they took the extra measure just as a precaution to send the legal notice and to all the abutters within the 100 feet of the property as required, and then they turned the certificates of mailing in with the map last week, so they got that under, underway here. So, that, that's what I wanted to say about the, the housekeeping issues. I did want to mention that some material, there's been a lot of back and forth with the applicant, as you know, and my office and other town offices and more. There was emails going back and forth in the last few days, some up until this afternoon. But we'll get to that. Some of them I did mail out and email to the commission late this afternoon, trying to bring them up to speed so that they understood that there was some last-minute changes.
Okay, hang on just a moment. Okay, my consultant, my IT person was here. I had to double check. All right, so at this time, then, we will start the hearing from the applicant. And if we can stay on target, that would be great.
Okay, Mr. Chairman. Good evening to you and to members of the commission. My name is Tom Cody. I'm an attorney at the firm of Robinson and Cole. Our office is in Hartford at 280 Tremble Street. And I represent the applicant, Montanti Construction. I'd like to first start off by introducing to you and, and really reintroducing the members of our team that are, that are here and that are. You'll be seeing little faces on your go-to-meeting screen. So first, from Montanti Construction, Byron DeLuque is with us. And Rob Peters will be with us from Amazon.com, who is the anticipated tenant of the facility, will be Michael Kelleher and Jessica Schumer. Our professional engineers from BL Companies include Jeff Dewey and Chris Gagnon. Carl Thunberg is a professional engineer from TerraCon. He's with us this evening. And then finally, Michael Klein, a professional wetland scientist from Davison Environmental, is with us as well. So that's our team. And what we will be doing is organize our presentation, hopefully make it a little bit easier for the commission. We prepared a few PowerPoint slides to show you, and Chris Gagnon from BL, I believe, is going to to be the operator of that. And I think it would be an appropriate time if he could have control of the screen to be able to start showing those slides. And we'll use that as a way to sort of move through our presentation as quickly and efficiently as we can.
Excuse me, Tom. Jeff Dewey here from BL. Sorry to interrupt. I am actually running the PowerPoint tonight.
Okay. Good.
Go ahead, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. All right, so Jeff is the new presenter.
I don't see anything from that gentleman.
Here we go. It's just loading up now, Mr. Chairman.
Very good. Thank you.
So, let me just begin and just give you a quick, a quick review. This, by the way, this slide up here is our, is our order of presentation. It's going to be four principal parts after my brief introduction. Jeff Dewey will review briefly plan revisions and responses to comments. Carl Thunberg is going to review some select hydrogeological issues that were raised. Michael Klein, summary of his wetland impact analysis. And then I will wrap up with some conclusions and findings and a review of the decisional criteria that Ms. O'Hare mentioned and that the chairman summarized at the top of the meeting. As you noted, the public hearing was opened on November 10th. And after that opening night, the town began the process to hire two different peer review consultants. George Cotter was retained to review the, the peer review, the erosion control measures. And SLR, formerly known as Mylone and McBroom, was retained to do a peer review of the stormwater management system as well as certain hydrogeology issues associated with the northeast portion of the site. Both Mr. Cotter and SLR produced peer review letters, which the applicant responded to. Both provided further responses, which the applicant also responded to. Eric Kruger of the Water Division was very active throughout this process. He's reviewed the application in detail. He has submitted a number of staff reports and memoranda, including, you know, working very, very quickly. You know, we received a staff report even as late today as 4:30 with additional thoughts that he had. Your town engineer has been involved in the review and has provided a staff report. And of course, the environmental planner, Aaron O'Hare, has been actively involved from the beginning, produced several staff reports, and has been a great source of contact for us for the application. I would echo your thoughts, Mr. Chairman. We appreciate all of the town staff's efforts to work with us and to improve the application and to address the town's questions and comments. In addition to responding to comments, sort of in letter form, we also twice did a complete or a comprehensive revision to plan sheets to revise and reflect a number of changes that were resulting from the various peer review comments. So in summary, at this point, I believe that we can say that all of the material issues that have been raised have been answered or addressed. And there are some issues that I would characterize as cleanup items that have been identified. They are probably appropriate for conditions of approval if the commission agrees, and we can get into those in a little more detail at the close of our, of our presentation and perhaps later in the hearing. So, with that, we have prepared a brief presentation in the spirit of trying to be efficient and somewhat condensed. We'll move through this quickly. So without further ado, let me turn the floor over to Jeff Dewey to review with you the principal responses to comments that we've made and the changes that were made to the plans.
Good evening. Again, my name is Jeff Dewey with BL Companies. The senior engineer for the design of the project. And basically, what we have done through the review process and revising the plans between staff review comments as well as the peer review comments, we have some fairly substantial revisions to the plans that I think have made the project overall and the plans a much better development. In base, well, one thing we did is we incorporated GeoGrid slope stabilization systems, which allowed us to reduce activities in upland as well as adjacent to upland areas and maintain more habitat area. We also, for the stormwater management system, we incorporated sand filter basins being separate from the stormwater management basins, which again greatly improved the water quality for the long-term design of the project. We've also incorporated infiltration trenches for the stormwater discharges for the project. This will encourage stormwater runoff collected and treated in the management system to infiltrate into the ground, which will certainly help the adjacent wetlands for, on erosion control through the many peer review as well as staff review comments. We've assessed our temporary sediment traps for up to a 25-year storm. And where we found that discharge velocities may be erosive, we included level spreader systems to disperse any erosive velocities. We've also included diversion swales and directed sediment trap outflows to secondary settling basins, which gives us another belt and suspenders level in the erosion control scheme. In general, we've expanded on the, the construction and erosion control sequence to give more detail for the contractor to follow. As, and we included, which was originally part of the contingency plan, but we've made it part of the erosion control plan to include ponds drawdown for both the large and smaller ponds on-site, which will give us a little bit of control if we have some kind of catastrophic event and we find some issues with the erosion control features. And we've also provided intermediate erosion control measures, further directing the contractor in a, quite a finite level of detail on how to perform the erosion control measures to protect the downstream resources. And we've also finalized our contingency planning. All this has been done with staff coordination as well as the peer reviews. It's been a team effort among not just the design team, but the town as well as the peer reviewers as well. On it, as a side note, we'd just like to note that with all these changes, overall, the project still does not have any increase in runoff volume or peak rate leaving the site. We still have an overall reduction. This is a slide just to show you. The picture in the upper right-hand corner is a one-to-one slope for the GeoGrid slope stabilization that I spoke briefly on previously. As you can see, it's a vegetated final slope in the picture. There are three areas that are selected on the screen where these are employed. There's one here in the south-central area, and this was again to get work outside of the upland review area associated with these southern wetlands. This whole slope along the access road will be the GeoGrid slope stabilization product. And this allowed us to pull the sloping again away from the wetlands, regulated uplands and upland areas as well to allow for more habitat to remain on the site. And the third place we employed this approach was here in the northeastern corner, and this allowed us to pull our grading farther away from this upper northeast wetland 1A area here. And again, have less regulatory areas, activity areas, as well as increase the distance away from this wetland area to reduce any potential impacts associated with the grading there. As alluded to previously by both Chair and Mr. Cody, we have worked extensively with Aaron O'Hare, the environmental planner. Mr. Kruger with the Water Department as well. Allison Kapusinski was a great help as far as some of the details and as well with the GeoGrid slope stabilization review. Mr. Cotter provided a lot of insight for the erosion control peer review and definitely helped us upgrade the project for the period, for the erosion control concerns and expand our contingency planning. And Matt Sanford of SLR and his team gave us some really good input on the stormwater system as well as, as the wetlands. And with the combination of the effort of all these teams as well as the design team, we believe we have put together a really solid project, both for stormwater management as well as erosion control and an overall really good design. And as part of this project, we've also looked at a few different items from the public. We have responded to public comments from the previous public hearing. In specific, there's been concern from both staff as well as the public with regard to the central wetland area that I'm circling here with my cursor. This is wetland 1B or the north-central wetland. And we've made a lot of effort to assess this wetland and protect it as well as provide development areas that we feel are appropriate for the site while still maintaining what we think is a viable and safe approach to maintain and resources, the habitat areas as well as the wildlife and vegetative species that inhabit this wetland area. As part of this project, we've worked with Carl Thunberg with regards to this to make sure that we were going down the right path with all our best expertise and design abilities to ensure that we are protecting this, this wetland. So, as I said, we contracted with Carl to further our design. And at this point, I would like to invite Mr. Thunberg to speak on how he approached our project and the advice he gave us and his assessment of the approach for the design of this project.
Thank you, Jeff. So, yes, my name is Carl Thunberg. I am a professional engineer with, with TerraCon. We have an office in Rocky Hill. So let's talk, so what we have here is the existing condition, right? The site of the proposed building is right now, it's a parking lot, right? And it's, it treated. You know, we didn't know a whole lot about stormwater treatment and the effects of, you know, sediments. And at the time this parking lot was designed, there's, and basically, it's untreated stormwater going right to wetland 1B without, without significant treatment. So what we have. And, and before we move on to the proposed conditions, let's talk a little bit about the hydrology of wetlands 1A and 1B. As Jeff alluded to, 1A is the smaller of the two wetlands. 1A is essentially perched wetland, all right? What that means is it's disconnected from the groundwater, okay? It is, it is perched and we, we did take some, some borings in there and the groundwater was significantly below the bottom of, of the, of this particular wetland. So that what that tells us is it's disconnected from the groundwater, all right? It is a perched wetland. And there's, there is, there's, there's no net change in the water budget to that, to wetland 1B, 1A, I'm sorry, 1A. So let's talk about the hydrology of wetland 1B, all right? That is a discharge wetland, okay? It is fed by a combination of groundwater and, and as well as, you know, surface water that, that runs into wetland 1B. And, and the, the distinction is really, it's just, it's just where the groundwater intersects the ground surface, okay? That, that is a discharged wetland. It's, and there's a perennial stream that runs right down the middle of it, which supports the, the notion that this is, is fed continually by groundwater and also by, you know, surface water that, that runs into the wetland. So, the hillside, all right? The hill, hillside, we did a bunch of borings in the hillside and we got very dense. There was no groundwater encountered in any of the borings drilled in that hillside, which all suggests that the hillside is, is actually not a significant water-bearing formation, all right? It's been suggested that the, there, the, the soil over, over rock is, has, has some storage capability in, 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 in holding groundwater. But that's really is, is. But that's really is is not supported by the data, right? The data suggests that is there there really is very little groundwater contribution from that hillside. It is, you know, very dense and we got no water whatsoever. So let's, Jeff, can you go to the proposed conditions? So here is the proposed condition, all right? So what we have now is we have we've incorporated as polluted enhanced stormwater treatment measures, sand filters for treatment, and also the infiltration trenches to to put groundwater to infiltrate stormwater, all right? Directly to groundwater so that it 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 can gradually percolate into wetland 1B. So the water balance to wetland 1B is unchanged. Where the water released to 1B is unchanged from the previous from the existing condition to the constructed condition. And and it will be released it actually much more slowly because of the the groundwater infiltration measures and the and the, you know, this the sand filters and, you know, the the there is a there is a net reduction of volume and and peak contributing to wetland 1B. But just understand that we are not diverting any water away from wetland 1B. All right, all the water that previously went to 1B is still going to 1B. The difference is it's now going getting there much slower than than in the existing condition. And it is also it is and it will be cleaner by by virtue of the sand filters and the various stormwater treatment. So I believe that's all that I had. And I will yield yield the time.
Mr. Chairman, should we save? Do we save questions till the end? Or should we ask questions?
You know, something I think that with the size of this application, I think it's probably wise if we ask the questions now. Do you have a question?
Yes, I thank you of Mr. Thunberg, I'm a little confused. But he, I thought I understood this before the presentation, but look into it. He said there's going to be a net reduction in volume and perk to wetland 1B. I thought we don't want a reduction. Do we want a reduction?
Okay.
Why is that a good thing?
May it not? Okay. What I'm in any given storm, all right? There is no net change in the water balance going to wetland 1B, all right? The total volume of water that used to go there will still go there. But the peak will come down and the so there will not be a big slug water rather it but the but there is no net loss of water to wetland 1B.
Okay. Um, and yes, thank you. And my second question was about that level 1A up in the northeast corner. You said the wetland, the net change, there'll be no net change to the water budget of that wetland. And my question is, my understanding from the materials that have been handed in, there's going to be a reduction of 2.14 acres of contributory drainage area. This can be taken away. So how could that result in no net change to the water budget?
So I'm going to defer that question to Jeff because BL actually performed the actual drainage cals.
Good evening and hi, Aaron. Thank you for the question. Yes, basically what's going on is so this is watershed 1A here. We are decreasing a little bit of meadow area here out of the watershed that currently drains into the watershed. The majority of this wetland's watershed is actually across on the other side of Carpenter. And there is a very large substation over there with a significant amount of impervious area. So what's happening is this small area of meadow and being meadow doesn't have a lot of surface runoff associated with it. And it's less than 10% of the entire watershed that feeds this wetland. So basically, when you run the runoff calculations, there's no appreciable change in the amount of runoff going to this wetland because this is such a small amount of area contributing with a low runoff factor where most of the watershed over here is still getting into the wetlands. And there is a substantial amount of impervious area that has a much higher concentration of runoff. Does that answer your question?
So is there still no net change to the water budget or is it down 10%?
No, there is no net change to the water budget. It it doesn't, what happens, Aaron, is when you have a surface coefficient of meadow, a lot of the water actually soaks into the ground, especially if you have very mild slopes. You have a lot of infiltration and exfiltration going on as the as the water drops into the sloped area. Where you have impervious area, you have most of the water runs off. So the small amount of area we took away that has a large amount of of the amount of rainfall that hits it gets soaked into the ground and the plant life. It's no discernible difference because there's such a large area and a lot of it being impervious that it's an insignificant change.
Right, thank you.
Okay, Commissioners, is there any other questions while we're on this area, this topic? Okay, go continue on, please.
Mr. Chairman, Michael Klein will speak next regarding his wetland impact analysis.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. My name's Michael Klein. I'm a biologist and a soil scientist with Davis &amp; Environmental. I've been working here in Connecticut for 39 years now. During our last public hearing, I talked about the proposed conditions at the site, primarily wooded wetlands characterized as wooded swamps, muddy river entering the site on the east side and flowing southwesterly through the site and exiting down in the southwest corner to large stormwater ponds that were constructed at when Bristol-Myers Squibb originally developed the site. A smaller stormwater pond or smaller pond at the outlet of the dam that supports the large pond. And I talked about a series of recommendations that I had made to minimize impacts. All of those recommendations have been incorporated into the plan. The primary goal of any project that we work on is to avoid wetland impacts to the maximum extent possible. I'm happy to say that there's no loss of wetlands or water courses proposed. There's no wetland areas that are going to be drained or permanently flooded or cleared of vegetation, no dredging or grading in the wetlands. So then we focus on potential changes. So so this slide shows the areas where there are activities within the upland review area at the site and they're, as you can see, they're they're pretty minor in extent. Many of them are immediately adjacent to existing disturbed areas, particularly in the southern portion of the site where virtually all of that area that you see in that pink color is associated with some minor modifications to the road. It's already the road access road runs through that area. Other areas where most work occurs is along Carpenter Lane, again, a disturbed area where the changes proposed are are really minimal. Next slide, please. So when once we're have achieved that wetland avoidance goal, then we look at ways to eliminate or minimize indirect impacts to wetlands. You know, changes in hydrology or water quality and so forth. You've just heard Carl Thunberg talk about the northeast wetland, wetland 1A. It's a perched wetland not supported by the regional water table. There's a very minor change in the watershed. There's no reduction in the volume of runoff going to this wetland. So the water budget will remain unchanged. There's no stormwater being discharged to that wetland from our site. The water quality won't be altered and we believe there's no impact on on that wetland. Next slide, please. Wetland 1B, the large central wetland. That should say north central wetland, my apologies. As Carl mentioned, the hydrology here is driven by surface runoff and upwelling groundwater. This wetland has a perennial or semi perennial stream running through it. It's wet all the time. The watershed on that hillside really isn't large enough to support that kind of hydrology. Upon looking at the results that that Carl's team had put together, it became apparent that that runoff from the from that hillside is not or the groundwater discharge from that hillside is not the significant source of hydrology. It's mostly surface runoff and also groundwater upwelling from the bottom of that, from underneath that weapon into into that area. The plans are designed so there's negligible changes in the watershed. As you've heard, there's a very significant infiltration component here. All of the discharges that go to this wetland are treated for quality, rate and volume. And I will say that that the gold standard here for preventing hydrologic changes to wetlands is to have no increase in volume and rate. Rate is much more easily achieved. Volume requires very extensive infiltration measures when you have this kind of a glacial till environment. And that has been achieved in this plan. And in fact, the DEEP has a groundwater recharge volume requirement. And we exceed that by more than eightfold. In other words, we're putting more than eight times more. We're putting eight times more groundwater back in the ground than the DEEP would require to maintain groundwater conditions in the area. Next slide, please. We haven't talked much about the southern wetland, wetland 1E. It's the wetland that includes the smaller stormwater pond and a wooded wetland. It is fairly typical wetland supported by both surface runoff and and groundwater discharges. It has been altered by the prior development. There's a lot of development along the eastern limit of this wetland and also the the ponded, the smaller of the of the two stormwater ponds, which has very, very steep sides and and minimal qualities or values other than for stormwater detention. A lot of stormwater was discharged to this wetland system from the prior use with very minimal treatment. The new plan has a much higher level of stormwater treatment proposed. Both quality and quantity will be maintained at much higher levels than they are presently. And we do have a fair number of habitat enhancements proposed in and around the wetlands in this area. Next slide, please. So the plans include two sheets that describe habitat restoration work that we're planning on doing. On this slide, you can see an area at the south end of the site. Jeff, if you could highlight the muddy river corridor area. There's an area of that your your review consultant requested that we highlight or restore rather the the woody vegetation along it. There was a lot of that area had been cleared and was turf down to right along adjacent to the river. The graphic representation of this may be a little bit further north than they had originally expected. We've we would expect that we would in the final plan set that gets submitted for for signature, we would shift that to the to the south and a little bit to the west to avoid any impacts to existing desirable vegetation in that area. On the eastern limit of wetland 1B, you see a number of areas coded in graphically here. A large portion of that area is that's sort of from the southern two thirds of that system is a native wooded environment that is quality terrestrial habitat for box turtles. And we've proposed that that area will remain undisturbed. That was one of the primary goals of the one to one GeoGrid slope stabilization system was to be able to pull the slopes back from that area. And we've done that. The northern third, which is shown in a darker color with an overhatch is part of the what we had originally proposed as as invasive species control. There have been concerns addressed by the water department with respect to impacts of that on on water quality. We've been, we're happy to eliminate that element from the plan. Doesn't have any impact, positive or negative on on the wetland system here. And so we'd be happy to eliminate that element from the plan. Move on to HR2. I'm sorry, well, they're both labeled it. Okay, the southern habitat restoration area, there's more going on. What you can see in the center, Jeff, if you could highlight wetland 1E, right? And the two stormwater ponds. So there's one E. I'm sorry, the existing stormwater ponds. Okay, there's the small pond that I talked about before. And then on the other side of the street, the much larger two acre pond. We're going to proposing to do a fair amount of work around those areas to enhance the enhance those systems, including converting them to to a native meadow mix with several hundred shrub plantings. Those shrub plantings will be fenced off with deer exclusion fencing and and they'll be available to to grow and mature and improve the diversity in that area. We proposed a number of areas where there are more turf vegetation. We're eliminating the turf, so there won't be any need to provide any nutrients or or turf management chemicals on those areas. But further than that, we're going to convert those areas to a wildlife conservation habitat mix. But you can see that all of the colored areas on this drawing, the greens and the blues and the beiges are all areas that are going to, they're currently highly altered. And they're going to be converted to back to a much more native habitat condition. We can do that in the stormwater basins throughout the entire site. Those are shown in the blue color and the areas of budding, abutting the the wetlands and the ponds. Next slide, please. As I've mentioned, the most desirable alternative here is elimination of any direct wetland impact. And we've we've done that, but we've also looked at alternative measures here that that could be have occurred in the development of site and analyzed alternatives arriving in our preferred alternative. So what this slide does and it shows the the existing condition at the site. In other words, the do nothing alternative, assuming that a existing infrastructure stays in place and a development similar to what Bristol-Myers Squibb had there is present at the site. We had very limited stormwater detention, no infiltration to treat for volume, essentially no treatment for water quality. There were erosion and sediment control problems during that construction, which the which the measures were much less advanced than they are now. Silt fence and the two large ponds. That proposal resulted in over two acres of wetland loss. And there was a walking trail with blue root boxes, but really minimal mitigation or restoration of wetland values. In 2018, that approval is an alternative. It also, it was designed for no increase in peak flow. It did not have the extensive infiltration measure. So there was some increase in peak volume. There was a treatment train to, excuse me, provide very extensive water quality treatment, substantially exceeding the requirements in Stormwater General Permit. A very detailed multi-phase erosion and sediment control plan, which included multiple sediment traps and included redundant controls. Had an independent construction monitor and used the ponds as a sort of a stopgap measure for final polishing of stormwater. It did result in a small loss of wetlands, about 2,500 square feet, which was offset with a mitigation plan that included little over two to one, 5,400 square feet of wetland creation and a buffer enhancement plan in terms of providing some additional plantings. The preferred alternative for, that you have now in front of you after all the modifications and revisions that we've gone through with your staff and the review consultants. No increase in discharge in the two to 100 year, 100 year storm. No increase in volume from, for the two to 100 year storm. The stormwater treatment train has been further enhanced with infiltration trenches so that during over 90% of the rainfall events, there won't be any surface water discharge and everything will be polished in the ground. The erosion and sediment control plan, which originally was in your previous approval, had three distinct phases. Now there's multiple phases. We've included the geogrid slope stabilization. The independent construction monitor and pond drawdowns are still in the plan. And we have a detailed contingency plan that includes stoplogs and turbidity curtains are happy, we're happy to include that measure. Your review consultant thinks that's important. We're happy to include that. So i- in summary, the wetland loss in comparing these alternatives, there's no wetland loss with the preferred alternative. There's about a third of an acre of enhancement of existing wetlands, about six acres of habitat restoration, a large area of box turtle habitat protection, a very substantial reduction in managed turf and about a half an acre of muddy river corridor restoration. Last sighting this year, their invasive removal, as I've said, were as a result of the concerns of the water department, we're happy to remove that from the plan. Last slide. So in summary, it's my professional opinion that there's no significant impact on wetlands or watercourses. I base that conclusion on the fact that this is a redevelopment plan. It avoids any direct impacts and minimizes any indirect impacts on the wetlands and watercourses. There's no loss of wetlands. The indirect impacts have been avoided or minimized by a erosion and sediment control plan that substantially exceeds the industry and regulatory standards. The stormwater management plan does the same. There is a detailed contingency plan. There's a habitat restoration plan to allow for additional native habitat at the site. And therefore, in my opinion, there's no feasible improvement alternative with less impact. Mr. Chairman, it's up to you. I can answer questions now or Tom, Tom Cody would like to wrap things up.
Okay, I'll start with Aaron. You got any questions?
Yeah, well, I don't know. Yes, I'm going to ask the applicant's team, at what point they want to discuss invasive species, the invasive species management plan? Do you want to do it later or is this a good time to talk about that?
Well, let's see if any commissioners got any other questions. Commissioners? I have, I have one and it may go together with Aaron's. I know you mentioned you want to eliminate, was that the chemical use of the invasive species? Something associated with the water and sewer department? You made reference to it twice and I didn't get an exact handle on it.
Mr. Chairman, let me, let me summarize this issue. We've had considerable discussion about it. It's been a very, it's been a very good discussion. Our habitat restoration plan included two parts. The first, as Michael Klein just showed you, includes an extensive planting plan of native plants to try to improve habitat. The second part of that plan included the eradication and management of invasive species with the use of herbicides. In many places, that is a recognized and an appropriate approach to the management of invasives. Eric Kruger from the Water Division raised concerns about this and gave it careful thought. And our response to Mr. Kruger's concerns was that if the town believes that the public benefit is best served by not applying herbicides in this area because of its location in the watershed, we would be happy to agree to take that out of the proposal and really just focus our habitat restoration on the planting plan and not the eradication of invasives part of it. Now I do notice in that today, Mr. Kruger wrote a memo and I believe that he has kind of concluded his thinking about this with a recommendation that none of these chemicals, which include amazapir, glyphosate and two others, he's recommending that none of these chemicals be used on the site for invasive species removal. So, and I don't want to speak for him, but it does appear from his memo, he's coming down on the side of saying that herbicides identified here should not be used for invasive removal. We're happy to agree to that and we still think that there's real benefit in our habitat restoration plan through the proposed plantings that we've included in our plans. So that in a nutshell is, is where we've been over the last few weeks talking about this with the staff.
Well, there's, there's no question that this is a direct water source to wanting for its public drinking water supply. And I'm sure other places that you've used these chemicals, it isn't a direct feed to the reservoir system. But Aaron, go ahead, Aaron, you had questions, let's handle those issues now.
Okay. I would say yes to everything. I think Tom, attorney Tom Cody summed it up well, up, up to this afternoon perhaps, except maybe left out some of the back and forth discussion that went on in recent days. Because I do agree with Michael Klein that there is some benefit to the eradication of these invasive species. I think, well, there's, that's two, there's two parts. One is the Water Division's position, which I'll get back to. But the other, separate from the Water Division's position, I do see the benefits, but in a nutshell, I think the invasive species management plan that was submitted isn't nuanced enough. This, I, this habitat restoration plan is, I would say, very sophisticated. I was very impressed with it. It's got different parts, different species, different things going on. It was very, very well done, I would say, by Michael Klein's firm or Davidson Environmental. However, the invasive species portion of their proposal was not nuanced. It, it was, it, it took me a while to understand what was going on. I had to really do some homework on my own to understand the cost benefit, what was going on on one end versus the other end, different approaches. I've been researching this week, different approaches. In other words, you don't have to necessarily use chemicals in certain areas or different areas can get different treatments, different degree of treatments or they could, we can forebode treatment in some areas. I do agree with what has been said around the pond, going to help improve the wetland habitat around the pond and the diversity there. That makes sense to me. Let me give you an example today. And by the way, the Water Division has been in communication with other water companies. What do you do? Do you use chemicals on your watershed? How do you get rid of these invasives? What do we do? It's a big discussion and there's a lot of different opinions out there. And what you do, but on this property, because of the previous development, the Bristol Myers, they, we find ourselves with certain invasive plant populations in certain areas. And some areas are fine, some areas are not that bad. But there's one area in the south where you've got a big colony of this tree called Tree of Heaven, which was the, the tree in the book, Tree, Tree Grows in Brooklyn. Is that the name of the book way back when, famous seller? Anyway, this tree is from Asia and it has a habit of pollinating through roots and it will colonize and it will keep on colonizing and reproducing that way underground. I believe that that might be an area that you want to nip in the bud and that in that area, I believe that chemicals would be a good way to pursue that. However, this, this is not what people normally think of spraying chemicals. Certain species such as fragmites or not, or Japanese knotweed, it is spraying pretty much. You can spray that if that's the treatment that is used in most cases. But for the Tree of Heaven, you can girdle, girdle the bark. You treat the lower base of the trunks with a chemical that's sticky. As it's been explained to me today, it's a sticky chemical. It sticks on the trunks. It doesn't wash off into the landscape and, and get into the river. So in other words, my point being, and also the, I understand different water companies will cut the Tree of Heaven and take the stump and then just treat the top of the stump and then if I get success that way. So I'm saying, all I'm saying is that I would like to see a more nuanced invasive species management plan. Personally, I don't want to throw the whole baby out with the bathwater. You know, going back to the Water Division's position. They're, they arrived at that position when they realized the scale of this treatment project. In other words, if you're treating a little area in your backyard, well, that's one thing. You're treating five acres, well, all of a sudden we have a scale issue here. That caught their attention. Today, in discussion with the Water Division, they, and I, they are willing to consider a more nuanced plan with site-specific, species-specific proposals or the best time to treat with the least impact, certain weather conditions, et cetera. And maybe forego the northern area like Michael Klein just mentioned. Maybe we'll forget about that northern area. That's kind of an area no one goes to. It's kind of, it's, it's, well, for various reasons, it's not a high quality area. Maybe it's not worth, you know, the cost benefit. Maybe it's not worth putting chemicals on that area for the benefits that will be derived from doing so. There's another, again, with the nuanced approach, you have areas where you're putting, I just want, can I mention one more thing?
Well, please summarize it up, come on.
Okay, you have, there's one area where there's, I believe, 300, correct me if I'm wrong, Michael, 300 trees proposed to, to create a reforestation of the muddy river corridor there. It seems to me there has to be some way to control the weeds and invasives that will come in once you install those 300 young trees. For them, we have to manage them so that they can become viable on their own and then shade out the invasives and so on. So what I'm leading up to is in my environmental planetary report of April 1st, I had a condition regarding limiting the chemicals. And maybe that was based on the Water Division's position. But today, in my environmental report that went out for 15 or so today, I present a different, more nuanced approach. And we can talk, if you'd like me to read that condition of approval.
No, not at the moment.
Okay.
The question I have, Attorney Cody, your original plan had extensive chemical use to eradicate invasive species. There is a suggestion here that no chemical be used. Now, how do you feel about this Tree of Heaven and me, and cutting, maintaining the invasion species or trying to eliminate the invasive species of the, of that particular tree?
I'm going to, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to ask Michael Klein if he has any views on the, on this Tree of Heaven issue specifically?
Well, wasn't it included in the chemical use to avoid, to eradicate the invasives?
Yes, it was one of, there were three principal species, I think, that we were targeting. Multi-flora rose, autumn olive and Tree of Heaven.
Okay, so, and what do you, what are you asking of Mr. Klein?
I'd like him to answer the technical question if there are other methods that might be used to manage the Tree of Heaven issue that's been raised.
Well, the, okay, go ahead.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I, Ms. O'Hare is exactly correct. We had with, with one, one other nuance that we would have for control of mature growth of Tree of Heaven, you would either use a cut and paint approach, which is, you know, painting a herbicide directly on the stump or a girdling approach with the spraying of a non-mobile product around the base of it. This would not ever have been proposed to be done with a mass spraying of the foliage. It is a fairly discreet area and I believe that the suggestion here is appropriate to control that. But again, if the water department's concern is not alleviated by that kind of a more nuanced approach, or which we'd always anticipated, then it doesn't, doesn't have to be done.
What's the diameter of these Trees of Heaven?
They vary from smaller saplings, inch or two in diameter, up to maybe six or eight inches. Okay, maybe 10 at the most, but more, smaller range there.
Okay, so, Mr. Cody, your, your client would be willing to address this particular species if nothing else?
Yes, we would, Mr. Chairman.
Then possibly, Aaron, we can work on something along, if we get to the conditions of approval, that they're willing to deal with this Tree of Heaven in conjunction with the Water Department. All right?
Yes, and I would suggest maybe some other key areas too, not in addition to the, I would also suggest there might be some other key areas that we would want to treat with chemicals in addition to the Tree of Heaven area.
This is something that you are suggesting to treat, but the Water Department doesn't want to use any chemicals. This is something you're going to have to work out with the three of you. You, the Water Department and the applicant.
Yes, and I, I put together a condition that allows for that discussion to take place.
All right, let's move on on the application.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, really what, what remains now is I wanted to take a minute to walk through those decisional criteria that you described and just kind of summarize some of the key points that were made in our presentation in the context of those decisional criteria. This is in section 10.2, of course. The first criteria asks you to look at the environmental impact of the project on wetlands and water courses. I think Michael Klein's presentation did a great job of summarizing that there will be no significant impacts on wetlands and water courses. And the application proposes no filling grading or direct loss. And we've taken great pains to develop and design extensive protections on any potential indirect impacts by managing our stormwater so effectively and developing an extensive erosion control plan that's been peer reviewed extensively. The second criteria. considers the applicant's purposes for any feasible and prudent alternatives to the proposed regulated activity. Again, Michael Klein showed you that chart that had really three alternatives on it. The first alternative is the existing conditions. And, you know, a potential redevelopment strategy of the site, which would have been very similar to the style of development that Bristol Myers Squibb had utilized when they first developed the site. That, of course, lacks many of the beneficial features that our application includes. The second alternative was the 2018 application for a different project that you approved. And while that was an improvement over the Bristol Myers plan, it also lacked many of the features that we've incorporated into this current application, including the fact that we have brought the direct impact filling activity to zero. And we've improved, we believe, the level of protection incorporated into the stormwater management plan. We've also, I think, have, I think we have a more robust erosion control plan. So this, we believe, is the superior alternative as you look at all three of them. I mean, there's no question, this is the superior alternative. And in our view, given the client's proposed use and operation at this site, that demonstrates that there are no other feasible and prudent alternatives to this proposal. The third criteria asks you to look at the relationship between short-term and long-term impacts on wetlands and the maintenance of long-term productivity. I point out here that the town has suggested, and we've agreed, to pay for the services of an independent site erosion control monitor that would monitor all construction activities throughout the construction process to ensure that erosion control measures are implemented according to the plan that we've proposed. We think this will have a very positive long-term effect on the wetlands and would demonstrate that there are no negative long-term impacts associated with the application. The fourth criteria asks you to look at the irreversible and irretrievable loss of wetland resources, which could be caused by the proposed activity, including measures to prevent or minimize pollution or other environmental damage, or maintain or enhance existing environmental quality. Well, we certainly have gone to great lengths to minimize potential pollution and other environmental damage. You haven't heard yet from Mr. Cotter in particular, but he can certainly describe for you what he thinks about the erosion control plan and its abilities to minimize pollution. We've also proposed a habitat restoration plan that we think really answers this criteria quite nicely in that it maintains and enhances existing environmental quality in a way which just doesn't exist at the site today. The next criteria and the second to last one is the character and degree of injury to or interference with the reasonable use of property which might be caused or threatened by the regulated activity. Here, we would say this, this application is neutral as, and it's a benefit in many ways, but there is no threat to any onsite or off-site property interests that would be created by this. And then finally, 10.2G looks at the impacts of the proposed activity outside the area for which the activity is proposed and future activities associated with or relating to it. And I think what, what we can say here is that the stormwater management plan in particular creates a long-term viable system to protect the environment. And that's including not only the onsite areas, but it also has such a great impact on downstream properties because we're protecting water resources. And that includes what happens downstream. So I think this last criteria is really addressed very well by the application in protecting downstream water resources. So with that, we, we think the application more than satisfies the criteria and gives you many, many reasons to look favorably on the application. Now, we, we have mentioned at the top of the meeting and then a couple of points since then, that there are conditions of approval that have been proposed by staff. We did make some suggested minor revisions to those. In large part, we've agreed with all of them. There are a few that we had asked be revised. I don't know whether you want to cover that at this moment, Mr. Chairman, or whether you want to turn to questions about the body of our presentation.
No, I, I, when did you decide that you didn't approve of all the conditions of approval? Well, this is exactly the problem that, that happens. Now, all of a sudden, you got your, your recommended commissions of approval a week ago, but here we haven't had a chance to look at your changes in conditions of approval.
Well, we, we actually received these proposed conditions on Friday, which was a holiday. And so we turned to those as quickly as we could, had discussions with Erin about them. So it's not like we just today, for the first time, gave a response. We did discuss with her. And I explained some of our concerns. And it was after that conversation that she suggested we put them in writing. So there are not, there are not many of them.
Well, you put them in writing. We received emails tonight. I would have liked to have had a little bit of a warning on what you're proposing for conditions. But before we get into that, we'll set that aside. What else do you have in part of your presentation?
That is, that really is, is, is all of it, Mr. Chairman.
You mentioned that, are your peer review people going to make any comments?
I think that's a question for Erin.
No, it's a question for you. You're, okay, I understand what you mean. I think that the, hers, I think she's in favor to hear a brief summary from the peer review people. Is that correct, Erin?
Yes, and if, from this discussion tonight, if anything comes to mind, because this is their, their opportunity to recommend, make recommendations or provide important information that they might not have provided before. So yes.
Okay, and this also gets a little more direct association with the public. Now, I don't think we need the screen anymore. I'd rather see the, the people rather than your, your PowerPoint, Mr. Cody.
That's fine, we will take it down. Jeff can return the control. You do that, Jeff, please.
You have a sheet with just the proposed changes of conditions? In other words, could that put up at a later time?
Yes, yes, no, we could, if you'd like to, we could.
Well, let's see how it, how it unfolds. It's nice to be able to read. But okay, let's get back to full screen, please. There you go, nice bike, ready to go.
It says on my screen, camera viewer is detached. I'm not sure why it hasn't come back to you all yet.
Okay. Is there something that I should be doing, Ally?
Uh, I, I don't really know.
I don't think so, because it's the presenter that put it up there.
Yeah, it should, it should go back, but if you can remove him as presenter, that might help.
I think that's the key.
I haven't done anything with go-to meetings. I've only done Zooms and that's how, you know, basically if you just take him out, then it'll go away.
I'm not sure how to take him out. That's our problem. Here we go. I don't know who was successful, but one of us was. Okay, Erin, who would you like to hear from first?
Oh, I, I really don't know. I know George, I think George Cotter, the erosion control peer reviewer is shorter at this point because things got cleaned up since December, January through March, February and March. So that's pretty cleaned up. So I think George's presentation will be shorter, so maybe we should do that first.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Cotter.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, it's George Cotter. I was requested to do a peer review by Erin. And she asked to review the existing documents and the additional submissions that were presented in December 21st, review submission by the applicant. I first went through the plans marked up on a set of plans. And in a January 28th memo that I sent to BL's companies, I had ideas that I thought should be modified in, in the erosion and sedimentation control plans. We had met onsite on December 15th and discussed a number of issues. Specifically, there's a path to the daycare facility with a footbridge where the wetlands are constricted into approximately eight or nine-foot opening. I mean, it was discussed there that, that was a potential place to add additional settling basin. They came up with the idea of the stoplogs underneath the opening of the footbridge. They also came up with a second location that they proposed to do that, which was right at the inlet of the large pond. We discussed the drawdown that would be advantageous for additional settling in the two ponds. And they have, they had incorporated that in, into the plans, erosion and sedimentation control plans. After that, I went through an extension and did a draft report, which was dated February 9th, which I submitted to the, Erin's office, was given to the applicant. It went through that report, review, reviewed the four phases of the erosion and sedimentation control plan, which is demolition and then phase one, two and three, which is the demolition is to remove the existing utilities. Phase one is to start the cuts and fills. Phase two is bringing it up to the finished grade. And phase three deals with the final plan, site plan as a finished product. I reviewed, made comments on those phases. She also asked me to review documents submitted, the construction site contingency plan for erosion control and emergency spills, the identificative review from ABS, APS, who is the Applied Polymer Systems, which are the flock logs. I looked at the geotechnical report and the temporary sediment trap analysis that they provided on the sizing of how they size their basins, their temporary sediment traps. They had extension notes on the plan as to how the ENSs would be implemented, the interactions with the town and contractor during construction. We also reviewed additional documents in that phase. And I came up with modifications in the different sheets. There were some were very minor technical. In essence, the main discharge point from the north is a settling basin that they added. I felt there was a need for a level spreader out of that. And they've agreed on that. I also recommended to them that the possibility of installing a large diameter pipe in the brook that flock logs could be placed in as in the documentation that was presented from the applied polymer. They looked at that option and felt that with the wetlands around that area, that the disturbance doesn't justify the inclusion of that pipe. In reviewing that, I, I agreed with that. They have, at that footbridge, at that location, put in stoplogs which will allow for some backup and settling as a last resort before it enters the large pond. The one issue that we still have that I have concerns on is that turbidity curtains in the two ponds, they are roughly three acres in size between the two ponds. They have provided an extensive plan to mitigate the, the erosion runoff during constructions. And I believe it's a solid plan. I think it's an improvement over the last plan we had from the previous application, although that was a good plan. I think they've made more, they've got more places to contain sediments onsite in the traps. They have the skimmers in, in the sediment trap ponds. And, excuse me. So I think overall, we're in agreement, I am in agreement that it's a good plan. However, I feel that those two large ponds apply, give us a last chance because they're the collection points for the discharges from the south end and the north end on the property that if they provide a plan to install turbidity curtains in there, if and when they're required, detail out that how, where they would be constructed, how they would be constructed, the timeframe to install those. And that can be provided at the pre-construction meeting when they get back together. I also recommended that they have an onsite person for erosion set of control, which is part of the plan. They, they have agreed on that. I also, they agreed that someone from, that has knowledge of the applied polymer flock log systems, review applications onsite and make, and give recommendations so that in the event that we have issues during a major storm event, that they can be applied. Those recommendations can be applied to the, to the plan. They also, after my first recommendation at our site meeting, added a detailed breakdown of one of the phases for a more specific detailed ENS application of how construction would be done. I, I think that gives the advantage of just showing the contractor during construction, a more detailed use of the ENS methods before they enter into each of the settling ponds. So the only other comment I have with them is the southern detention basin five, stormwater management basin discharge point. It's a sand filter and a detention basin. Stormwater management basin discharge point. It's a sand filter and a detention basin. The discharge from that is into. A trench. They provided different places onsite where they're recharging in trenches with thirty six inch diameter pipes. Stone around them and allow it to go back into the ground from the discharge from the basin. However, in looking at what's detailed on the plan from the topography shown on the plan. I feel there's a potential for runoff to go down the old service road down to Old Barnes Road. My point in my last letter this week of the, of the, that I submitted on their response that I got on the thirty first. I recommended if they feel that, that what I'm seeing on the plan is incorrect, that the water will not run down there. I've requested if they're not going to move the trench to the north, which would direct it into muddy river brook. That they provide a detailed top of the area to demonstrate that what they've shown on the plan will discharge to the brook and not on the service road. And basically those are the only two outstanding points. And I think those can be addressed in conditions of approval if they agree.
Okay, commissioners, any comments? Oh, Nick, Ellie. Debbie, Jennifer. I've got a comment. I, I, having. Past experience with that red soil coming off of Bristol Myers and experiencing at another location, that same type of soil. That red does not drop out as a sediment. It hangs in the, the water. I can't even begin to think how long, tremendous length of time. And what the success was, was the frac logs. The last time you experienced there, we experienced the wetlands commission, the frac logs were just so successful in removing that red soil. That for them to, to. Not choose to use that and think they're only going to need it within a high level storm, I think is incorrect. I think that product, that, that red soil is going to come out of all the water that comes off that site. Listen, let George finish, Mr. Cody.
All right. One of the things is that in reviewing the, the, the reports that they provided with the borings is that the northern side is a more. A sandy loam soil. The southern portion is the red soils. And on the southern portion, they have existing structures that. In discussion, I believe they agreed that they could use the flock logs and some of the existing piping into the small basin. Prior to entering and that I would recommend they, they consider. Adding them in the discharge of the outlet structure of the small pond to the large pond. I think there's a much more robust system. That's in place to dilute, that where they, they will use flock logs onsite. That's part of their plan. And, but the limitation on it is how much of the material you can apply in a, in a watershed, in a water supply. And there is a limit on that, but that's why I've recommended that a person familiar with. The systems of, of applied polymer. Can be, make recommendations. I think there are places that they have agreed that they can apply those prior to getting into the small pond. And that's where the red soils, I believe, will be discharging from that southern portion of the property.
Okay, that, that makes some sense. Yes, Mr. Cody.
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to say that Mr. Cotter summarized those two conditions in a memorandum dated yesterday. The two conditions that he just described, the turbidity curtains. And the, the moving of the trench location, we've agreed to both of those as written in his memorandum from yesterday. So that issue, I think. Can be put to a condition of approval and the flock logs, I believe, are already referenced in our plans. So we, we agree to, to their use where, where they can be used.
Okay, that, it's a good point that there's a limited amount that want to go into the same drinking water supply. That's an interesting point. Wasn't aware of that. Aaron, any questions at this time?
Just about the bond estimate, is that coming later? That'll be later.
Yeah, that'd be later. Yep. We'll save that for later. Okay, we have the next peer review person.
Yes, good evening.
Good evening.
Commissioners. My name is Matthew Sanford. I'm a professional wetland scientist, registered soil scientist with SLR. In addition, I'm joined this evening by Ted Hart, a professional engineer with SLR. As well as Austin Dowd, an engineer with SLR. We were retained. To provide an independent technical review as relates to the stormwater management. As well as the wetland and water course impacts and invasive species management plan for this project. We have prepared two independent comment letters based on the original plans that were provided to the commission. And an additional comment letter based on revisions that have been provided to the commission. This evening, what I would like to do is to first turn it over to Ted Hart. To briefly describe the stormwater review. And then after Ted is done, I'll turn it over, well, he'll turn it over back to me. And we'll go through some general comments I have related to the wetlands and water courses and/or invasive species management plan. So without further ado, Ted.
Thank you, Matt. My name is Ted Hart, professional engineer with the firm of SLR here in Cheshire, Connecticut. We reviewed the stormwater management plan. We had, as Matt said, we had a number of comments going back and forth. We feel that this plan, as far as the stormwater management goes, is excellent. They have stormwater quality measures that include water quality sediment traps, sand filters, stormwater basins, infiltration trenches. And these measures will exceed the Connecticut stormwater quality guidelines. We did have, a lot of our comments had to do, you know, our last round of comments had to do with maintenance type issues. You know, some of these measures may be difficult to get to, to maintain. They, they basically raised a lot of the bottoms of the structures because there, some of them were very, very deep. So they've, they've done that. There's going to be some issues getting to the infiltration trenches, but they said that they can, they can handle that. So. I think that, you know, those issues can be addressed, you know, by the applicant when it comes time to do their final plans. We did have a, a comment on their infiltration trenches. They, it's kind of an interesting design that I haven't seen before. The, the pipe is underground. So there's a discharge below grade. Into an infiltration trench. And our concern here is not that it won't work, but that it'll be difficult to maintain if it does get full of sediment. So that's something that they said that they could, you know, deal with in their operation and maintenance report to assure proper performance. They also added a concrete curb along the top edge of their infiltration systems. So that will provide a sheet flow and they won't have concentrated flow going down the slopes. They're spreading out the, the stormwater discharge. Let's see, what else? Structures. There was one concern we still have and, and, you know, they, they said that they would address this, you know, prior to construction during the pre-construction. But there's a forty eight inch infiltration pipe that is along the, all along the easterly side of the building. It's at a depth where it's going to encounter the ledge. You know, according to some of the borings nearby, it looks like the pipe will be almost three feet into bedrock. So they said that they would raise that if they, if they had to. But that's something that, you know, it won't infiltrate water if it's, if it's, you know, inside a bedrock trench. So. So those are, those are all of our comments. I just wanted to say that, you know, the, overall, the stormwater quality measures are very good. And I think a lot of that has to do with the fact that it's in a water quality or a drinking water supply watershed. But overall, it's a, it's a good plan as far as the stormwater quality goes. So that's all I have, Matt, if you want to take it from there.
Okay, thank you, Ted. So from, from the wetlands perspective, you know, it was my job to take a look at the reports that have been provided. By the applicant's team, Mr. Mr. Klein, Davidson Environmental Wetland Impact Assessment. As well as TerraCon's report related to the geotechnical and hydrogeology of the wetlands, as well as BL Company's stormwater reports. As relates to the wetlands themselves. Overall, I think it's important, and I think Mr. Klein had pointed out during his present part of the presentation. That, you know, typically when we are looking at projects of this magnitude, there are typically direct wetland impacts. That are proposed on projects and that's not the case for this project. In addition, there is usually significant activities in the upland review area of a particular site. For this project, if, you know, if you, when you take a look at it, the primary upland reviewer activities are associated with restoration or invasive species management. Around those wetlands in the southern part of the site that have been previous, previously disturbed. In addition to that, the other URA impacts are associated up in the northern central wetland, wetland one B. And that's part of the, part of the stormwater management plan, as well as part of the invasive species management plan. So in whole, when you start to look at that, you start to hone in on, okay, what are the other potential impacts associated with the project? That aren't related to the URA and/or directly with the wetlands. So one of the other things that I want to point out is that there was a vernal pool that was identified on the site. And that is located down by what was once the daycare facility for Bristol Myers Squibb. They're not proposing any project activities within that vernal pool, within the vernal pool envelope, which is a hundred foot envelope. Around the vernal pool, as well as the terrestrial critical habitat that's associated with that vernal pool. So all that is positive for the wetland systems and protecting the important functions and values of the site. Some additional information was submitted to the town, I believe it was this afternoon. And it relates to another vernal pool that was documented immediately offsite along northeast wetland, wetland one A. At this time, I would like to ask the applicant to describe what that vernal pool is. What the species were that were found in that vernal pool. As well as, you know, any of the protection measures that are being implemented for that vernal pool. So that's the first question I'd like to ask, and then I have a few others following that.
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Yes, you may.
Michael Klein, wetland scientist and biologist with Davidson Environmental. The area that Matt is referring to is offsite. It was. At, in the two thousand eighteen, after our reports were prepared and submitted during the. Hearing process. We, we were asked to. Identify the wetlands along the eastern site boundary in the northeast utilities or rather ever source property. We really are not able to permitted to legally, don't have the authority to enter onto their property. Eric Davis from our office who did the wetland flagging walked along the boundary. And using just visual observation, he was able to. Sketch in the approximate wet limits in that area. When he got to the northern portion, just east of the water tower. He identified an area of standing water. It's off the site. We did not do any detailed surveys there. He did hear wood frogs. They are a vernal pool species. They're also a very plastic species ecologically and can. Utilize a, a number of different habitats based on that. Auditory information and the fact that they're looking at the aerial photos, he did see evidence of standing water in that area. That area was, was sketched in on an old plan. There's the, the critical terrestrial, there's no work proposed in the hundred foot area, although certainly Carpenter Road. And the water tower both invade that one hundred foot vernal pool envelope, the primary protection zone. Approximately half of the critical terrestrial habitat is offsite on the other side, or not offsite, but on the other side of Carpenter Lane. And thus is cut off. There is a portion of the. Seven hundred and fifty foot potential terrestrial habitat area that is. On our site, most of that area was already disturbed during the Bristol Myers construction and is either. Parking lots, wood roads, or dense thickets of, of autumn olive. There are two very small areas of forested habitat that's appropriate for the terrestrial. Life portion of the life cycle of that species. We included that in the sketch that we sent over to Erin and Matt today. And based on the fact that there's such a small area of appropriate habitat, potential habitat. Within the limit of disturbance proposed, it's our opinion that if there are significant biological resources in that. Portion of that wetland, they would not be adversely affected.
Okay, next, next topic I have. Yes, thank you, Michael. It does. It provides much more context than the, the map that was provided this afternoon. Next question I have, and again, probably Michael, it'll, might be your. Answer for this question is, we have several areas, we have an eastern box turtle habitat protection zone identified on the plan itself. The question I have is, is that. Eastern box turtle habitat going to be protected with signage? What's the long-term protection? Is there a conservation easement that's proposed over that area? How, how is that going to be preserved long-term?
The, perhaps the nomenclature might be a little bit confusing. That area was originally proposed to be. Cleared and regraded as part of the. Two-on-one slopes. When I, when we did our site investigations, that area is a. One of the few areas on the site that's predominantly native vegetation outside of the wetlands. And it's, it's a nice oak beach forest and it is sandier as, as George Cotter mentioned, and it's good terrestrial habitat for box turtles. So we wanted to protect that area in terms of preventing. Or modifying the plan to use the one-on-one slopes with the GeoGrid. And so that's where the designation. And so that's where the designation came from. At this time, there's no particular signage or easement proposed. I'd have to defer to Mr. Cody and our, and our client on, on that issue. But that's, that's where that, that came from, that, that designation. It's, it's an area that we, we protected by modifying the plans.
So the other component of this that the commission may want to take some consideration on is those sensitive areas that have been identified by the applicant, such as the eastern box turtle habitat protection zone. In particular, the northeast wetland and the hundred-foot vernal pool envelope that does, does is located, portion of it is located on this particular parcel, as well as the wooded habitat that supports the vernal pool, may, the commission may want to consider some additional protective measures such as a conservation easement as condition of approval in those particular areas. The last topic I wanted to talk about this evening, because there was a significant discussion on it, was the invasive species management plan as it relates to herbicide applications. And I just wanted to, just to, to provide a couple points on that. From, from my professional experience with doing invasive species management, there's always a combination of a mechanical approach as well as a herbicide approach. That's usually the most effective way and cost-effective way of managing invasive species. In this particular case, you know, what the applicant has identified as the three target species, those being the tree of heaven, multi-floral rose and autumn olive are all conducive to a very sophisticated targeted approach to herbicide application, which again, is, is a positive as relates to invasive species manager plan and its potential implications to nearby water resources. And so I would echo some of the topics or discussions that Aaron O'Haire had brought up, as well as Michael Klein in terms of the means and methods for eradicating or at least managing the tree of heaven, as well as the other two species through a specialized and very detail-oriented application procedure. And I believe that, that can be done safely. I'll start protecting what's very important to the town, which is the water quality, both within the muddy river as well as McKenzie reservoir. So I think it can be done safely and efficiently and effectively. And I think that's, I think important to, to have on, on the record. Lastly, you know, again, you know, we've done a thorough review. The applicant, project team has been very responsive to addressing our concerns and comments as it relates to stormwater, as it relates to the wetland issues, as well as invasive species management. And at this point, I, I don't have any further testimony to put on the record at this point. I don't know if Aaron had any questions of us at this time and/or the commission.
Well, I'll start with the commissioners. Do you have any questions? Mr. Sanford? Okay, Aaron?
Yes, Matt, I'd like to, maybe I missed it, but in, in your last comments about the, the herbicidal issue, did you, your comments applied to all the different areas they are proposing for invasive species management? Or were you restricting that to the tree of heaven, or were you talking about any, any, all of them? I'm a little confused.
No, no. So yeah, I, I know there was a lot of discussion about just focusing on tree of heaven, which, which is, you know, one of the primaries, primary target species that's been identified. But to be honest with you, in terms of, in terms of the approach, and again, I believe, and again, this is my professional opinion, in terms of my experience working with these, with these three species, that all three of them could certainly be treated in an effective manner and be done in a very sensitive manner and protective of the water quality. So, you know, I've, I've been involved with many projects that have, have done the exact application that was identified within the all habitat document that was part of Davidson's environmental report. I'm just saying that this certainly, all three species could be effectively managed through a herbicide application program.
All right. And then my other question was in your opening line, you were saying, or you're talking about, and in your experience, these programs combined, they have a herbicidal component and a mechanical component.
Sure.
We haven't heard anything about the mechanical component. I don't think Michael Klein can correct me if I'm wrong. But I haven't heard any approach proposed that's actually called mechanical.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, go ahead, Michael.
The mechanical portion of that includes, would, would be, for example, the cutting and stump treatment of the more robust individuals. Given the large area involved, just ripping out, ripping these out one by one mechanically would, would not be practical.
But I mean, in terms of the roses or the autumn olive, that's not practical to do that at all. Or mowing, I don't know, continually mowing, like constantly mowing the roses. I don't know. I don't know. I'm not real up on this stuff.
In, in the, some of the meadow areas where the roses are not 10 or 20 feet tall and two inches in diameter at the base, that can be effective. And that's one of the reasons why we did not include those areas in the invasive species management plan, because as part of the overall site management, they will get mowed on a regular basis and it will keep the, the rose and the olive under control. In the areas that are very, very dense, you need to use a combination of mechanical and herbicide means, just because they're so dense. But I think the mechanical methods will be primarily involved in cutting and getting access to the root crown. So you can, you can treat the root crowns directly with the herbicide.
All right, thank you.
And I would just add, Mr. Chairman, I agree, you'd agree with what Mr. Klein just described as the mechanical means.
What, what did he describe? Does he want to take them out by the root or cut them and spray them?
I would spray primarily, Mr. Chairman. But, you know, it's, that, that, this is a experienced contractor licensed to provide, to apply these products is going to be used. And these are decisions that sometimes have to be made on a case-by-case basis. If you find isolated specimen that you can just yank out of the ground, you know, that might happen. But the likelihood of leaving parts, root parts behind that could respout is, is high. Especially when these are, have been growing here in some portions of the site, you know, unfettered, if you will, since Bristol Myers Squibb did their original site development. So I think the primary measures are going to be cutting and, and painting or the girdling spray mechanism. But that's, that, that detail is best left, quite frankly, to the contractor who does this stuff on a daily basis. But we're certainly happy to, if you decide to allow that portion of the plan to go forward, we're certainly happy to address that, those specifics with, with staff and with the onsite monitor when we get to that portion of the plan.
Well, I, I'm not in favor of ripping the stumps out, only because you're opening up more ground and to try and control the erosion off of more open ground. I'm in favor of cutting them and treating them, either painting them or girdling the, what's there. Ripping stumps out with that kind of equipment, you're going to end up just opening up more land for erosion control.
We're happy to, to, to address it in that way. That's, that's perfectly acceptable.
All right. Okay, Mr. Cody, do you have anything else at the moment? Or, excuse me, Aaron, you're all set with these fellows?
Well, I just, that was the first I've heard tonight of conservation easements. I, I haven't heard that mentioned.
Yeah, but I don't see where that's a big issue for them. I don't see why they would have any objections to a conservation easement up along the, what's it, 1A border up along Pond and 1A?
Well, I think it was more for the other one around the daycare site. That's where we're sitting.
Is that where the vernal pool is? Not around the daycare, is the vernal?
There's two of them. There's two.
I know, but this was the one that was up that they can't go on the ECLMP right away or ever source right away. Mr. Cody?
You, I think Matt could clarify that.
Yeah, so my, my recommendation is, recommended is looking at the sensitive areas. And ba- based on, based on the habitat that's existing out there, based on some of the documentation that Michael provided this evening, my recommendation would be a conservation easement in the area of the northeast wetland, as stated by the, by Mr., by the chairman, as well as along the eastern portion of Wetland 1B, north central wetland, where we have the eastern box turtle protection zone, as well as I believe there's an invasive species management zone located along that wetland as well.
But not for the other vernal pool?
The other vernal pool is, is sandwiched and protected by a few wetland systems in that general area. I mean, that could be considered as, as another area for conservation easement, but in terms of what I've seen based on the proposed development and the encroachment close to or within the critical terrestrial habitat of the northeast well and vernal pool and the proximity to the north central wetland and the activities proposed adjacent to or within, those two would be the most critical areas for conservation.
Okay, Mr. Cody, are you in agreement with a conservation easement in that area, those areas?
Mr. Chairman, we would agree to a conservation easement in the specific areas that Mr. Sanford's just described. I just would want to be clear that this is not a conservation easement for public access. It's just to protect against development. You would agree? Okay.
Okay, Aaron, Aaron, anything else?
No, no, I don't have anything.
Anything else at the moment? Okay, all right. I'm going to open this up to the public right now. Do we have comments from the public? I don't see anybody, I don't know how to get you away, Mr. A. Go ahead.
If, if that was AK, that's Adelaide Copper. Do you need name and address as well?
Yes, please.
35 Whiffle Tree Road here in Wallingford. Just more a general comment, I'm a little overwhelmed as a layperson with all the details. But I, I wanted to thank the environmental planner and the water division for all their work on this. As, as a water division customer here in Wallingford, we actually do drink the drinking water and, and that's why I care about the drinking water supply. So basically, I really wanted to thank all of you, the commission and the staff and for, for all your diligence with, with this work and this project. And I also appreciate the willingness of the applicant to accommodate all the concerns. At the same time, it has been said that the measurements exceed regulatory standards, which, which is great, but in the end, I, I really hope that we not only exceed the standards, but we do the very best we can for our drinking water. One question I have maybe for the water division. Are there any monitoring sites? I, I don't know the exact technical, technical term for the for what, for what they do. How, how they monitor the water quality, basically when the muddy river exits this, this site? That would be a question. Is, is there any specific monitoring site or, or what do they call it? A quality monitoring site between this site and the McKenzie reservoir?
I know there's nobody here from the water company to give you a specific answer. I, I think the water quality gets monitored at McKenzie reservoir because certain other contributaries into the system. Would you agree, Aaron?
Yeah, I believe so. I believe so. Also, I, maybe Jeff Dewey can chime in. I know the water division has, is going to be monitoring the site onsite during construction in terms of turbidity and in terms of moving forward, I believe. Uh, it's, it will be in place yearly as part of the site operations and management plan that they get to come onsite and monitor other things. Jeff, can you chime in on that or?
Yes, good evening again. Jeff Dewey with BL Companies. Throughout the entire construction process, we will be monitoring for turbidity, both upstream and downstream, as well as onsite. So we will be keeping a tight look at any potential turbidity increases associated with the project.
But in, what I was driving at, Jeff, was the water division personnel requested to come on the site and do some monitoring of their own during this construction. And then I think they, it's in their watershed protection regs, which are housed in the zoning regs. Don't they come on quite often periodically to check, to check the functioning of the sand filters or something like that?
Correct, Aaron. They do have the ability to come onsite and monitor the stormwater.
Okay. Okay, does that answer your questions?
Yes, maybe one more, one more quick note. I think I heard at some point regarding the discussion about invasive species. I think I heard mentioned glyphosate. I, I really want to ask one more time that extreme caution, like the water division requested, extreme caution is taken with the pesticides and the risk to our water source. But overall, again, thank you so much for taking the time and going through all these details. After all, it's, it's our drinking water. Thank you.
Thank, thank you. Any other comments from the audience?
I think I'm caller nine.
Okay, and your name and address?
William Stecky, 54 High Hill Road. And maybe this was covered in November, but I don't remember that. Can you tell me how much paved area there is in this new plant compared to what was at Bristol Myers?
It, it was covered in November, but we certainly can bring that up again.
Yeah, I just, like, there's this amount of parking, which, you know, says snow removal, et cetera. So I just was curious.
Okay, Mr. Dewey, do you have that information?
Sorry, I'm searching for my unmute button, as well as the records here to find that number. It's not like it was necessarily at the tip of my fingers here. I, I would request a couple of seconds to be able to look up the actual number, if you don't mind, if you could move on and I will get back in a moment.
I'll just comment before you move on. Just, I got the impression that having, you know, paved or impervious areas in the watershed wasn't a desirable thing. I'm only good at that.
I think that's one reason why the plan, it's taken so much time to get the proper storm, water control, stormwater control management under control. Okay, any other questions?
It just seems like, yes, maybe this is more for next week, but it seems like a lot of parking space for, compared to the size of the building.
Yes, I, I would agree, but they explained that last time. It's for parking the delivery vans more than storing warehouse stock. And they had a interesting system about, in waves, so that the vans, when the vans move out, the next group of employees fill those parking spaces and on and on during the day. Interesting on that point. Any other questions?
Yeah, can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Nick? No, who's?
I'm not sure what caller, caller I am.
All right, your name and address?
Jack Aragoni, eighteen Martin Trail. I feel pretty good that I'm not going, I live right on Muddy River, right at Spring Lake. I feel pretty good. I'm not going to get flooded and I guess you're not going to put any more sediment into the lake. What I am concerned about is the quality of the water, having to do with chlorides, sodium and the chlorides. I trust you saw the Water Division Power Plant Presentation, December fourteenth, two thousand twenty. What I found very striking about it, there's six graphs in there. They do testing on the Muddy River and they also test the McKenzie for chloride and for sodium. Both of them have more than doubled since the early nineties. My well is thirty feet from the Muddy River. My chlorides have doubled since nineteen eighty-five. And I've been telling people about this, but it seems like no one has heard me until I saw that report. The, what's interesting about that trend, if you look at the graphs. The chlorides and sodiums pretty much spiked in two thousand eighteen. Then they went down. It's about the same time Bristol Myers shut down. Which makes me think that an awful lot of that was coming from that site. Maybe I'm reading more into it. I know there's weather trends and all, but it's just, my level has also gone down, just a few points. The it's only five to ten minutes, you know, water flow time from that site to Spring Lake. The other, if someone mentioned the amount of impervious area. How does this compare to Bristol Myers? Now, if we saw that much chlorine, chloride coming, you know, back two thousand seventeen, eighteen, is it going to double now? And I realize, I don't think you can filter that stuff out of the water, no matter what you do, you know, with your sand filters and sediment traps. The other thing that's interesting. You're changing over to calcium chloride and magnesium chloride. I've noticed a rise in both of those chemicals in the last couple of years also. Again, I don't know where else it would be coming from. I know there's been a changeover from sodium chloride to those types. Just, that's basically my question is, you know, is that being looked at, you know, the, what I'm talking about? Thank you.
I don't have the particulars in front of me. I know, I know Bristol Myers. Somebody online?
Ed, please mute your mic.
I know that Bristol Myers with the parking they had and the amount of employees they had and the size of the building. There was a lot of impervious surface there. Anyway, next person from the public?
Ed Bradley.
Is Ed, is that you, Ed?
Yeah, it's me.
Okay, you got a bad echo going on. You gotta find.
Hold on.
Okay.
I, I can just say something quick. Jen Crichet, twenty-nine Valley View Drive. I apologize if this was mentioned. Sometimes like this is going over my head and I feel like I'm listening to Charlie Brown's teacher, but did we talk about snow removal and like where the actual snow is going to go with all of the parking spaces that there are? And like the chemicals that are in the snow?
I think it's been addressed on the staff level. That's it, Erin? Where the snow is going to be stacked and been reviewed by the peers?
Uh, yes and no. It's, it's, as Jeff Dewey can tell you, it's on the plan, but I haven't paid much attention to it myself. I probably, the Water Division was looking at that more than me. But I did see them on the plan.
Go ahead, Nick.
Back in November or December, one of our meetings, I addressed where the snow was going to be put and they talked about they had areas they were going to put it. But I'm also under the impression that there's not going to be any type of salts or any type of deicing done up there. It's all going to be natural because of the way the sun comes up over the mountain. It, it's going to be dressed. It'll thaw real quick. So unless I'm wrong on that. Mr. Dewey can tell us, you know, revise that, but I thought, I know I addressed it back in November. At the November meeting, I inquired about where the snow shells were going to be, so.
Yes, sir. You are correct. There, and as part of the Water Division, we are very limited. There will be no chemicals or similar used for deicing.
Okay, another caller.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, go ahead.
Could you clarify that? I thought it was just sodium chloride couldn't be used.
Or any other deicing materials? I believe all they're allowed to use is sand. And I'd have to, I know it's written in the O and M as per Eric Kruger's comments previously.
I believe the O and M says sodium chloride. I could check that while they, while you take other questions.
That was Erin speaking. Okay, any other questions? Any other comments?
This is Bill Stecky again. I was just wondering if we ever got the answer to my first question.
With regard to impervious surfaces?
Yes. Because it sounds like the two of, we're on that same, you know, topic.
Yes, sir. I apologize. There is approximately an eight hundred thousand square foot increase in impervious surfaces. However, the stormwater management system far exceeds what was existing there for Bristol Myers with regard to stormwater quality and quantity treatment.
By with a sub eight hundred thousand square feet of it, you'd have to exceed that.
Yes, sir. I mean, it, it greatly increases. Currently, there is, the Bristol Myers site had very, had no water quality features in place and had very little stormwater management at all. And we have, with our design, not only have we exceeded a huge amount what was there for Bristol Myers. We also greatly exceed what the requirements are for Connecticut DEP and DOT as well.
Well, thank you for that info.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Erin.
And Jeff, I did find in the site oper- site operation maintenance plan dated March fifth, yeah, if you look on page eleven, it just says no, no sodium chloride. It doesn't say, it doesn't prohibit any other kind of salts, does sodium chloride. I don't, I mean, I wish someone from the Water Division was here, but I don't think they meant to extend it to all salts. I could look through their, all their various comments that have come in over the months to see, but I don't believe though.
Right, I'm sure they've got to be careful because they're spreading the, the salts on the road that are going in the Muddy River, the town is, so.
Right, and that's, I think George can tell us. I think that's calcium chloride. I believe the Director of Public Works told me it's calcium chloride. Do you know, George?
Uh, no, I don't, Erin.
How about Nick? You know it, Nick, what the town's spreading on the roads?
No, I'm not sure. Calcium chloride breaks down and evaporates real fast, so I doubt, I believe they're using salt. They call it magic salt. It's got a chemical to hold it to the road and it, it's
And they're using some brine. I don't think one of them was around. Yeah, because it's, it's, it's not a flaky. Isn't calcium chloride more like a flake?
No, it, it comes in on a triaxle truck. It's a, it's a granular type. Yeah.
Okay, all right. Any other questions from the public? Okay, all right. Now, let's get back to the application and where we left off. I think it's near time to talk about conditions of approval. That was one of the issues that Mr. Cody had written the paper on, or had a paper of his own on. So, Mr. Cody, you are in agreement with all the conditions of approval that Erin has requested? Except? Which ones?
So I summarized our questions that were based on Erin's Environmental Planner's Report dated April second. I summarized our comments in an email to her. And there are I think four that I would just raise for discussion because I think everything else we've already discussed and agreed to.
Okay, because to her. I'm trying to get which one is going on. Okay, so her. This is her first copy of conditions of approval, dated April second.
That's right.
Okay.
And, and three of them, three of like questions are about the section numbered six. Which is conditions relative to ponds. Starts at the bottom of page eight and goes to the top of page nine.
Okay.
The first issue that Erin and I discussed is in the fourth bullet. Which is the plan for possible unfavorable aquatic conditions. And what we did talk about, and I think we agreed to was that in this condition, the second and third sentences would be deleted. And the first sentence would be revised. And the revision would simply be a plan to be submitted within sixty days to address the possible need for improvement of water quality conditions. And salvage slash rescue of aquatic animals should low water levels create distress slash unfavorable conditions for viability. So when I talked to Erin, I think we came to an agreement on that language. One sentence and delete the second and third sentences.
Are you in agreement, Erin?
Yes, yes.
All right, let's move on.
All right, the second comment was also in the same condition, number six, in the next bullet, the fifth bullet. And here, we have no concern or problem with the first paragraph and we have no concern with subparagraph A. However, we do have concerns with subparagraph B and we would ask that it be deleted. And the distinction between subparagraph A and B is that in this condition. The, the question really is about should restoration by sediment removal be determined to be necessary? The permit T shall provide a proposal for such activity. Yes, we agree to that, but this subparagraph B attempts to describe a scenario where sediment removal is not even needed. Because it's not necessary due to such a minimal depth of a sediment layer on the pond bottom. And what we've been asked here to do is to agree to provide remedies for the treatment of ponds for algal blooms. Post-coat construction phase erosion control measures in the event sediment is stirred up in the water column. Our concern with this is that the pond is already compromised. It already has algal blooms. It already has some of the con- conditions that are referenced in subparagraph B. And I think it would be impossible to measure and implement such a condition. And I don't think it's necessary because we've agreed under A to remove the sediment. If there is any sediment there that needs to be removed.
Let me ask you, does, in, in paragraph B, there's no timeframe associated with that. It's post-construction. It could be five years from now.
Correct, that's another concern.
Okay, Erin, you have any trouble eliminating B?
Yeah, well, yes, here's why. It's been explained to me when we were chatting, oh, month, month or two ago. Sometimes, let's say two inches of sediment ends up in the bottom of the large pond. Sometimes it's better just let it lie. Digging it up, it's going to create havoc. You know, it's going to be a big project, stir up more sediment. Sometimes you let it lie and it'll settle down. You just let it be there. Okay. That's, that's fine. I understand that. However, my concern is that potassium, phosphorus, and nitrogen catch the soil particles. They're going to come in. You know, they're going to wash in during the construction phase into this pond. And that's food, that's, that it makes it eutrophic. Those are nutrients. It'll be nutrient, what they call nutrient loading. And I'm afraid there'll be a, a significant explosion of plant life in response to all this nutrient loading. And then that plant life dies. And then it gets soggy and then as it's dying, it, it degrades and it uses up any oxygen in the pond in the process of degrading and returning to soil and so on. So, um, that was my concern, just that we're going to have a extreme algal. I, I don't know. I mean.
I think you're, you're reaching out pretty far on this, Erin. If that looks like it's a potential, you're willing to clean the pond out in paragraph A. Let me point out, Mr. Cody, that Bristol Myers cleaned the pond when they were occupying a property and they used filter bags, which we thought was a, a really a, a unique situation and a great thing. I'm just wondering that, I know your plantings along the edge of the pond are extensive, but I'm not sure if it's left any room that if you have to get out to the pond to do any more excavation or, or pond cleaning. If that's been given any thought, but that's not, that's certainly can be addressed at that moment. Anyway, going back to this, Erin, you still on board with this B? I, I, I think it covers under A.
Well, you know what? If it becomes a problem, I'm sure the Water Division will step in. So, there you go. Let you know, like five years from now or whatever, three years, five years, yeah.
Cleaned out. Go ahead, Mr. Cody.
Okay, the third condition is the next numbered seven. Condition regarding chemicals to be used in the eradication of invasive plants. So.
Let me, let me point out to the, what I think this should read, and you can put it in the correct.
Okay.
I think this whole eradication of invasive plants is still a very open subject between you, Erin, Mike Klein, and Eric Kruger. Kruger, you, you've still got some work to do on this to specifically identify what you, what's your plan of attack. I think we want you to do some eradication of invases or clean up invases, but we don't want to impair the, the quality of water that Wallingford has and we want to try and satisfy everybody's concern. So I don't know what you have to say about it, but I think that can be an open condition of approval that says that you, the applicant and staff will work with the Water Department to come up with the best possible plan.
Mr. Chairman, I, I agree. And in fact, I think Erin has already taken that step in that, in her memorandum of today. The very last condition that she describes in her memorandum of today really speaks to the point you just made, that we would together come up with an invasive species management plan. And that the water division would have a role in the review and approval of the plan and the specific use of any chemicals. And so I think, Mr. Chairman, that that condition probably is a better a better condition and could just replace number seven on page nine.
I will, I will tell you that this commission very seldom leaves an open-ended condition of approval such as that. Usually, usually that it is pretty cast in concrete because you take, not all applicants will do as agreed unless it's in black and white. So, but I'm having faith that because this applicant has done so much working with the town and all departments that they will continue to do that honorably also. Okay, so that's that was number three. You got a number four?
The last one is really a minor one. We simply point out in at the end of the April 2nd memorandum, there is an attachment which speaks to the role of the independent site sediment erosion control plan implementation monitor. And I just want to point out one thing. Number six, under scope of work. There is a reference here to storm events defined as a precipitation event of over one quarter an inch of rain as per the DEP general stormwater permitting requirement. I believe that that general permit actually references not point, not one quarter, but point five inches, half an inch of rain and that's section 5B 4B1. So I just wanted to point out that I think the current deep stormwater general permit has a half inch requirement, not a quarter inch.
Okay, that's an easy condition to change. You will agree to whatever the DEP general storm water permit requirement is.
Yes, we will. Absolutely. So that that concludes the comments that I raised with Ms. O'Hare.
But now you're her memo of. I mean, her conditions of approval start on page five and go through page 12. Her 11th law. You're in agreement with all of us?
Yes, we are, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Yep.
Now, there's this question was bonding. Though Mr. Carter was assigned the task wetting a bond. And can you fill us in a little bit on that, George?
Yes. George Carter, peer review. I asked BNL to come up with quantities and estimated prices for those quantities for the ENS bond. And I would review that and they came up and prepared in conjunction with the applicant a bond schedule or a bond figure of $1.375 million, which they are prepared to post the bond for and includes all of the ENS work in all four phases of the project. The one comment I do have, if this is the the bond is agreed upon to be posted, that this bond for ENS covers all of the ENS. They shouldn't be posting two bonds for the same same work in my estimation.
Okay, I think your memo indicated that there are maybe possibly errands that there is a planning and zoning has a piece of this apple too, as far as setting bond amounts covering certain items. And I think she was going to work together with planning and zoning to see what this million three covers and what it will cover and et cetera, et cetera. I think Nick's got a comment. You got a comment, Nick?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, does this 1.3 is going to be to through the construction to post-construction? We're going to hold them hostile for for the whole the whole construction?
Erin may have an answer because it's come up under discussion about what does this actually cover? Go ahead, Erin.
Oh, well, we we are the wetland commission is in over the years does do partial releases of bonds as projects move along. Is that what your reference was to, Nick? Like, can they get a partial release after phase one, after phase two, that kind of thing?
Well, I don't want to hold them hostage for a million three for the whole project if if they're done with the S and E part of the project or who's going to be the factor to release in sequences or phases? Are you going to be the one that releases that partial bond or who is going to release the the money?
That's a good point. Let me look. I'm thinking is the independent site monitor, that's in the scope of work. Let's see what that says. I don't know. That's a good question. I do know on a smaller project, on most of our applicants permits, application permits. I go out and inspect. They they send in a letter requesting a release of partial or all of it. I go inspect. I say, no, you know, it's a rotting over here. You got to fix this, fix that. But on a site this big, no, it would not be me. I'm looking to see if the monitor would get involved. Or maybe someone else can chime in.
Is this bond strictly for wetlands?
No. My understanding is George is for everything, right? Or just S and E?
Just S and E. It's they broke it down by phase, all the requirements that they showed on their plans for each phase in the in it. They had the demo phase one, phase two, and phase three. So if the demo portion has been completed and you're on the second phase and all those items have been installed or the plan has been completed with the monitor and the town reviewing what was implemented in in the, say, the demo phase and it's done. Then potentially it can be released, but it covers everything to do with erosion and control for the whole entire project.
All right. So you've just said you just broke it down the thirds then. The phase, the three phases of construction, you're going to break their bond down to three, three phases.
It's actually broken down to four. There's a demo phase when they start the site that include items, the initial silk fence, hay bale, et cetera. And then they maintain what they're supposed to do through each of the independent phases. The only thing I would say is if you got to phase four, you might retain some of phase. Well, the third phase, if you got to the final phase, some of the previous phase, you might want to retain as into that is there's more ENS required in that final phase. But they have provided a complete breakdown and at 1.37 million, I think you got your ENS covered for the bond side.
Okay.
I was wondering, and maybe attorney Cody can chime in on this. I was thinking maybe that would be a good idea to add another item to the scope of work for the independent site monitor to one of his tasks, this person's task would be to give a recommendation that, yeah, this phase is complete. We can ask for partial release. I would like to see that.
As long as you agree with them.
I, Mr. Chairman, yes, the applicant would agree to that.
But do you you agree? You you will have to agree with the monitor. Erin.
Me? I'd have to agree?
With the monitor. You would have to agree with the monitor that the.
It should be worded, you know, the the independent site monitor. One of his tasks is to recommend recommend that recommend that site conditions are sufficient to recommend a partial bond release with approval of.
I agree with the site administration.
With approval of the town. In other words, the water division might run out there and say, wait a minute, you know, or something like that. But.
Yep. Yeah, I just don't want the commission to rely 100% on the site.
Right. It's got to be worded right. Do you agree with that? Mr. Cody?
Yes, we do.
Okay.
Okay, anything else? So they agree to the bond. That's the bond's going to cover all the S and E. All right, anything else?
Yeah, you were entertaining two conservation easement areas or something?
That's true. Two conservation easements brought on by Matt Sanford. One up along water wetland 1A and one along the banks of 1B. As long as they're provided that they're not for public use strictly for protection, wetland protection. All right, you all said, Erin?
Uh, yeah, just a little bit of making sure everybody's on the same page. On page, my page nine of this environmental planners report I wrote today. The first bullet on that page, I just want to make sure that everybody knows I want to cross out the last sentence in my condition number three. So my condition number three refers back to the previous environmental planners report that went out just before Good Friday. Okay? So condition number three is goes on, look at the second bullet. So it's on, I'm sorry, it's on page six of my, what's been called my April 2nd environmental planners report. Obviously, that was a typo. I've corrected on the file copy. It was typed on April 1st, which was a Thursday. We were closed on April 2nd, Good Friday. So if everybody could make that change, I've made it in the record copy. It's April 1st. I actually typed that and got it out.
Page six.
Page six. If you go under a three, third condition. Conditions to be met before any alteration of the site occurs. If you go second bullet down, independent erosion control plan implementation monitor. If you go down now, turn over to page seven. Yeah, the last sentence on that page, it starts the terms of the monitors. And then it goes on to the top of page seven. Just cross that out. Actually, the law department asked me to cross that out. So the last sentence gets crossed out.
All right, what else, Erin? Okay, I've got a question from the public again. Ms. Crawford, I'm sure I didn't pronounce it correctly.
No, that's that's fine. I would just like to go back one more time to previous callers with the snow removal road treatment and so on. And specifically to the one caller with, I think, if I understood right, the well close to the muddy river who who reported that in his water, water quality, sodium and magnesium and calcium or whatever it was, all went up. So I think my question is, is there any provision? I understand there's a lot of effort taken for turbidity and sediments and so on. What about the chemicals in the water? And is there any provision? If those go up again, what what would happen? How how could the water quality be remediated?
I the question to me, I would ask is where do the increased chemicals come from? And then have to be addressed from there. I mean, I don't believe the water department has already got under control of what they're using for snow removals, but mainly specifying sand mainly. So I'm not sure. Ironically, somebody's drinking well water is is you're not sure how how much surface water gets into that so close that a person's well water could come from three or four miles away rather than 100 feet away. Depends if the well is uptight and tight. The town drinking water supply, I just have to rely on them monitoring their own water supply and keeping chemicals at bay. I know the the water department does and planning and zoning, they won't allow some pool companies to store their chemicals for treating pools in a watershed area, drinking watershed area. So I just don't see what this application is going to bring in the chemical category at this point.
I think I was referring to the increase in parking spaces and impervious ground.
Yes, go ahead.
And to probably also the increase in in treatment with, you know, salt and stuff like that. So as as the caller with the well close to the muddy river assumed or suggested that it might have to do as also the timing was very close to Bristol Myers group's closing and that it that it could very well come from that property. And so that that was, I think that's why my question was. I do trust that the water division will monitor that, but if in case the the quality gets worse or the chemicals go up. Is there any any kind of provision how that could be remediated remediated?
I don't have an answer for you other than the town offices, something like water and sewer. If they've got some kind of increase, there's state levels, there's town levels. That town would certainly investigate, I would believe, especially in a drinking water supply. But I don't have a direct answer for you.
Mr. Chairman, I know that sodium chloride is prohibited for use of the icing in the watershed. And that is found in the zoning regulations, but but the water division in their repeated memorandums have reiterated that, that there shall be no sodium chloride used. My question is, I got a few questions. One is, how do you control that? How do you know what Amazon would be using three years from now, five years from now? How do you? How do you patrol that? I don't, I that's, I wish the water division was on tonight. Maybe they could have a good answer for that. And I don't know their position. I wish we knew their position on calcium chloride and magnesium chloride. We don't at this moment. They probably would have something very interesting to offer if. And maybe they will take this up in planning.
It is their regulation. It's their request, their conditions to do that. I'm sure they're going to be monitoring it. It's their request. I mean, they have people checking out the first, they have inspectors around. They have those people out on the road checking those things. So I would think it's theirs.
It's a good question. It's a good question.
Okay.
I'm sorry, this is caller eight again, Bill Stuckey. Just wanted to make one nuanced point. You know, with 750 parking spaces, there's a lot of vehicles coming back to that facility. Taking whatever chemicals were on the roads that they drove back to that parking lot.
No questions about that. Anyway. Any other? So we're ready to move on. We've got all the things in place.
Could I have one comment, Mr. Chairman? I wanted to remind everybody that everybody, the applicant's team and the commission that commission, that condition number one kind of folds in. If you want to look at condition number one, which is on my environmental planners report of April 1st. Condition number one is a cactol. It kind of folds in all the recommendations that the applicant has agreed to from both our peer review, ENS peer reviewer or the SLR peer reviewer of the hydrogeology, the stormwater, the wetlands, Matt Sanford. My recommendations and various reports up to today and all the ones that came in this week, it kind of folds in all that in there. So we don't have to call out tonight. I hope we don't have to call out every single change to this change that was requested and agreed to by the applicant. In discussions with the applicant, they they are going to honor those requests as as can be tracked in all these memorandums coming in. Is that a fair way to put it, Attorney Cody? That it all gets wrapped into condition number one?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we tried to create a. Yes, Mr. Chairman, we tried to create a mechanism to efficiently pull together all of the little knits that have to be changed, and we put them on these two sheets. And that's what Aaron is referencing, which is called out in the first condition of approval, that all those little notes will get put back into the revised final plan set to be submitted within 60 days of approval, and that becomes the final set of record.
But I think she's making reference to more than just that. Uh, I think if something comes up tomorrow that hasn't been discussed and you haven't seen, that gets included too. Now, the other question is the elimination of these four conditions of approval, do they have to be spelled out, or does that go into the catch-all also? Because to to spell out this condition of approval on this tonight, if if it goes that far, you you got a lot of ups and downs, and you got a lot of other pieces coming in.
I'm sorry, which which condition were you referring to, Mr. Chairman? I missed that first part.
We we eliminated four conditions of approval tonight.
Or tailored them, yes, tailored them. We didn't eliminate them wholesale, I don't think. We substituted one.
Your catch-all. Are they in your number one catch-all?
No, they're separate conditions, like the one about invasive control is now we substituted the existing con- is number seven, we substituted that for the new number seven.
For you, catch-all was supposed to take care of all the things that that uh aren't in the plan tonight. You gotta make up your mind, is it, does it, does your catch-all take care of all the additional things that are coming and not the ones we're eliminating?
I think it does, it takes care of everything, but we still need to keep the rest of the conditions below it. We need to.
Oh, you're gonna keep all the conditions, but.
Yeah, okay, alright.
You you're just, you're not getting involved that this is eliminated and that's eliminated. Everybody's in agreement for that.
Yes. I I am, yes.
Alright.
The applicant, I guess.
You're in agreement, Mr. Cody?
Yes, we are.
Okay. Alright, um. Alright, so I think uh we're ready to move on here. Is any other question from the commissioners? Seeing none, then, uh, I'm not going to need a vote on significant activity because we have already can uh determined this was a significant activity, correct, Aaron?
Right, yes.
Now, I should be closing the public hearing before the vote?
Um, yes, right, Attorney Cody, help me out here.
That has to, public hearing has to close before.
Yes, okay, then at this time, I'm gonna close the public hearing at 9:53. And if the commissioners would like to, we can act on this application tonight. And if they would like to, if someone would like to make a motion, that would indicate that they would like to go forward. I don't hear anything, so uh.
Jim.
Go ahead, Nick.
I'd like to make a motion, but I just wanna clarify, um, just a few moments ago, you spoke about uh there could be some conditions added on tomorrow, uh things that weren't caught. Um, I don't think that's fair to the applicant. If Erin goes home and she stays up all night and finds 20 more bullets to put on this guy's list, I think we should, we have a shut-off point where what's been said up till now is where we're gonna vote for. I mean, this is, you're leaving an open uh opened-end invitation for uh for conditions, which I don't think we're trying to head that way.
He is agreeing to that. The applicant is agreeing to that. Correct, Mr. Cody?
Can you just?
Okay, the com- the comment made is this number one uh condition of Aaron's suggested approval. That's in the the April 1st, uh, right, Aaron?
Yes, yes, condition number one.
Condition number one. The way I read it the first time, it allows things that were discussed tonight, things that you brought to the table today, and things in the future will be included into the final plans. Is that correct?
Well, I I can't, I'm not sure what you mean by things in the future. Um, we we certainly, I, the spirit of the comment, I thought, was that it may take a day or two to assemble everything that's been discussed tonight.
And what if it wasn't discussed tonight?
If if it's somewhere in the written documents that we've agreed to, then that's that's fair game, and and you know, we have quite a bit of material here. If it's somewhere in the written documents that we've agreed to, or that we've discussed and agreed to, that's an appropriate condition. But something new that isn't really being voted on tonight.
I don't disagree with you on that. I don't disagree with you on that, but um let's see, I I'm rereading, give me just a moment to reread this. Okay, I think you're covered because it specifies tonight's meeting.
Okay.
I think we're in agreement to that.
Yeah, I just, I was uncomfortable with uh the long-term add-on.
I I don't, I totally agree with you, Nick, it just uh, I'm glad it got passed out.
Okay, as long as you're comfortable.
Any other comments from the group? Alright, then uh I'll entertain a motion, and I think the motion should simply say uh prove the conditions that Aaron has written in the two dates or memo of the two dates, uh April 1st and April 7th, uh, what's the second one, April 1st and April 7th, correct?
Yep.
Anyway. Go ahead.
As modified tonight, I mean, we made a lot of little changes.
What it says.
Okay.
Anybody interested in making a motion? If not, we'll go on to next month.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion. Application A 20 dash 10.35 Research Parkway, Muddy River, Montante Construction LLC. He has proved this submitted um with Aaron's comments from April 1st and April 7th, and the modifications that were done tonight. Make a motion for it to be approved.
Motion made, is there a second?
Uh, Deborah Phillips, I'll second.
Okay, motion made and seconded. Uh, any discussions? I'll call for a vote. Jennifer?
Yes.
Ally?
Yes.
Debbie?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, this has been a lengthy application, and uh I appreciate everybody's time and everybody's work, uh, Town Wallingford, Darren, Water Department, the uh town engineer. Um, I don't know what I'm gonna put on the paper, though, it's kind of a, quite a log of paper here, but uh, anyway.
Mr. Chairman, on on behalf of the applicant and all of our professional team, I would also like to thank you and the commission and the staff and the peer reviewers for the collaborative effort over some five months now, so we appreciate all of that.
Oh, you you know, you know something, I forgot, and uh I'm gonna bring it up right now, and because it's not a wetland issue. Uh, but I know you have uh Amazon people on board listening, if they're still here with us.
They are.
I'm gonna tell you that uh where Amazon are parking their trailer trucks over on Barnes Park North. It's a stacking area, staging area for their trailer trucks. Um, I will tell you, it's a pigpen over there. The drivers just throw all their garbage out the window, because who knows where they go from there? It's not a very uh good image for Amazon, and I think the only reason why it's hidden, it's it's down the end of the street. It's where Colachrome is, and it doesn't um look that very often.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, um, this is Michael Keller from Amazon. Um, if I'll I'll contact this, the town to get the exact address, and uh then we'll 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 have our community operations people take care of it uh this week.
Okay, that's great. It's uh Barnes Park North, it's the last building on the left. Okay?
Thank you, sir.
Okay, very good.
I wanna thank George for staying up late tonight, too.
Me too, don't get normal up late, too.
George, cut it, well.
Uh, Mr. Cody, it it may have got off to a rough start, but your your uh developer or property owner has been patient and been cooperative, and it's a pleasure when you gotta get into that, this size operation and things went this way. But it really has to do with the cooperation of all the people involved, all the people. Okay, very good.
Yep, thanks.
Good night.
Okay, getting back to I think, Aaron, uh, I'm not gonna go through uh much of what's here, there's a lot of correspondence on the back, but the violations, Aaron wanted to uh make.
Could I interrupt? You just, if you could do two things, Mr. Chairman, receive the new applications officially, and I have to tell you about oh, two more that came in since this was posted. Two more came in yesterday, yesterday.
What do I have to discuss the applications for?
No, you don't have to discuss them, you receive them. It's just a housekeeping. You receive all the new applications.
We receive all the new new applications. Okay, what else?
So the two new ones that came in today, I just wanna mention what they are. One is one, or yesterday, 119 Quigley, it's a shed. And the uh the next one is um 4A Research Parkway that is gonna combine 6A and 6 Research and 4, it's it, the owner is the same of 6 Research, which we approved uh like a year ago, two years ago.
Okay.
So, and then, yeah, okay.
All in cars, I guess.
Yeah.
Okay?
Yep, yes.
What was the other violation that you wanted to deal with?
Okay, the new violation is um the uh, it went out in the in the packet on Good Friday. The new violation is 11 Trumble Drive. And a copy of the violation letter went out, the maps and so on. The thing that makes this a little different, it involves encroachment on town land. So there was a wetland violation, but unfortunately, they straight onto town land to do this violation, so it's kind of complicated, and we're trying to work it out with the um, the homeowner. They were putting in, they were trying to get the water off their property. Their basement fills up, and they didn't want, they couldn't take it anymore, and they wanted divert the water. Essentially, that's what happened.
Alright, then if there's nothing else, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Well, you know what, I mean, I would like you to affirm my notice of violation, if you've looked at it, and if you think it should be affirmed. Again, it's a, it's a just protocol. The commission has to affirm, when I write a big letter like this, it has to be affirmed by the commission.
What are you referring to, 11 11 Trumble Drive?
Yes, the notice of violation, not their application. They also, in the notice of violation, I requested they submit an application, which they did.
Does the commission support Aaron with the notice of violation to 11 Trumble Drive? All in favor? Yes.
Aye.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay?
Yes.
Anything else come before us tonight? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second?
Uh, Robert Simons seconds the motion.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Okay, very good, thank you, guys.
10 o'clock, we'd be good.
Yeah, that's good, 10:05.